Yeah.
Ready? We'll call this meeting to order, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for March 8th, 2022. We'll call, Mr. Peter.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Yeah.
Schwartz.
Here.
Jelka.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public comments, anyone from the public have any comments other than what's on the agenda here in the boardroom? Seeing none, any online? Hearing none, moving on to claims and payments. Mr. Perry.
Expenditures total $487,482.80. The Sheriff's Department makes up $35,359. Maintenance Department, $59,848. Health Department, $20,754. And finally, secondary roads, $44,128. Everything looked normal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is a resolution. Any further discussion? Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning Cathy.
Good morning, Board. Cathy Nicholas, County Engineer. The paved roads are in very good condition this morning. The gravel roads, we've gotten over most of our districts yesterday, but we did not get cleared yesterday. We will be going back out today and getting the gravel roads all cleaned up. We are washing and cleaning our vehicles and then getting ready for the, what could be another snow event on Thursday. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Nafisa.
Good morning. Nafisa Bonier, Blackhawk County Public Health. Not much of an update since last week, however, our community levels are now low. So that's goodness.
That's a good update. Thank you.
Anyone else in the boardroom? Anyone online? Hearing nine minutes approved for March 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Hearings times approximate, 1:05 hearing on opening bid for the proposed 23 Seal Cove project. Next is on the consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is proclamation, this resolution, you want to read that, please, Grant? When you get caught up, sorry. Proclaiming the month of March, Brain Injury Awareness Month.
Whereas a brain injury is damage to the brain which temporarily or permanently impairs a person's physical, cognitive, or behavioral functioning. And whereas falls, motor vehicle crashes, and sports injuries are leading causes of traumatic brain injuries in Iowa. And whereas, often described as the silent epidemic because brain injuries are not always visible to others, over 90,000 Iowans live with long-term disability from brain injury. And whereas screening for lifetime history of brain injury is an important part of person-centered program planning. And whereas education is essential for brain injury prevention, overcoming misconceptions, and achieving long-term recovery. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors, in and for Blackhawk County, on behalf of all staff and citizens of Blackhawk County, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Brain Injury Awareness Month.
Thank you, Grant. I have a motion and a second on the floor of this resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the motion.
I'll make a motion.
Sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Now, now we can do it.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution at the 28E agreement between Blackhawk County and the City of Elkhorn Heights, defining roadway maintenance activities and bridge inspections or portions of Elkhorn Road be approved and direct the Chair to sign for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Cathy. As I discussed in my email with you, this is that short section of Elkhorn Road just north of Dubuque Road that goes just past the bridge there on, over Elkhorn Creek. We've been maintaining it for years and we have a separate snow and ice policy that has been signed by them since 2015. This agreement only covers shoulder maintenance, pavement markings, roadway maintenance, and it also includes inspection of the bridge there. We share the bridge at a 50-50 ratio with the City of Elkhorn Heights. I would ask that you approve the agreement. We are charging the City of Elkhorn Heights $350 a year. This does more than cover our annual costs to maintain that short section of road. The City Council of Elkhorn Heights has already approved this agreement, and I'm asking that you approve it now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cathy. Any questions for Cathy? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Jelka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes, resolution adopted. Other business, this is a resolution that the tax sale certificate assignment for one vacant lot located in Waterloo, Iowa pursuant to the 446-31 of the Code of Iowa will be approved and to check said certificate of purchase of tax sale be assigned to Citi Cultivation LLC as recommended by Rita Schmidt, County Treasurer. The delinquent taxes and special assessments of $451.75 and the $10 assignment fee of said partial shall be paid by Citi Cultivation LLC upon approval.
So moved.
Second.
Rita.
Rita Schmidt, Treasurer. This is a vacant lot on Ricker Street. The private buyer is willing to pay all taxes and special assessments that are outstanding, and they're just asking for the approval for the assignment.
Any questions for Rita? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a motion to approve the personnel requisition submitted for a budget administrator full-time replacement effective March 14th, 2022, as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Cathy.
Yeah, I just want to say that this is a replacement. Our current position is going down to maintenance, and it's a key position in the Engineers' Office. They develop the two budgets that are needed by the DOT and, of course, the county budget. So I would ask that we be allowed to replace this position.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion or questions for Cathy? Hearing nine, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is a motion that the provision of the Blackhawk County General Assistance Policy and the Blackhawk County General Assistance Area Policy with the said changes to be effective as of July 1st, 2022 be approved as recommended by Colleen Shepherd, General Assistance Coordinator. Good morning, Colleen.
Good morning. I have outlined all of the changes that I'm requesting in previous emails, so I don't know if you have any questions directing towards that. I just feel very good and confident about all of the changes. Most of them are just well overdue, and a lot of them are just because the times are so different that we just need to do something different with the policy. And I just always appreciate your continued support with the program. Also, just the agencies continue to do a great job with assisting with the distribution of the rent and utility funds, so I always appreciate that. And then just a special thanks to Mike, as he helped me go through the policies, and it's just always nice to have an extra set of eyes on those policies, so.
Thank you for working. Thank you for your work.
Yep. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing bid opening to be held at 1:05 on March 22nd, 2022, in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on a proposed fiscal year 2023 crack ceiling project in various locations throughout Blackhawk County.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing bid opening to be held at 1:07, March 22nd, 2022, in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed purchase of two motor graders for the Blackhawk County Engineers' Office.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is a 1:05 hearing bid opening on the proposed fiscal year 2023 Seal Cove project.
I'll make a motion, receiving place on file, proof of publication of notice of public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any written comments, Grant?
No, sir.
Cathy? All in favor, all in favor of closing the oral comments? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Bids received and opened in red. Bid deadline was 3 o'clock, Monday, March 7th, 2022.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
The bids were received by 3:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
We have electronic bids and some paper bids this morning.
And estimate is $119,050?
Yes, that was our engineers' estimate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll do the electronic bid first.
Okay.
The first bid is from Farner Asphalt Sealers. Their bid is $130,337.50. The second bid comes to us from Prairie Road Builders, Farley, Iowa. They have submitted a bid bond. The bid is $105,827. The third bid is Blacktop Services Company, Humboldt, Iowa. They have submitted the bid bond. Their bid is $102,354. The fourth bid is Manats Incorporated, Brooklyn, Iowa. They have submitted the bid bond. The bid is $92,058.50. And those are the bids. And I, can you comment, Ryan, on the electronic bids? They have to submit the electronic bid as part of their, I'm sorry, the bid bond, excuse me.
It's an electronically verified bid bond. So they, they get the bid bond from the bonding company, have to electronically verify that it's valid to submit it.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion at the Board of Supervisors, review and place on file the bids to allow time to review said bids as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is G, discussion possible board action to purchase six vehicles for the Sheriff's Office with ARP funds at a cost of not to exceed $300,000.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This discussion will hearken you back to when we were doing our budget conversation for the Sheriff's Office, and Supervisor Little asked about moving vehicle purchases out of CIP and into ARP for this round. Both James and I balked at that because traditionally, we've been in this mode where we've got our cycle, where we purchase three to five vehicles every year, and we didn't want to disrupt that cyclical notion. We've been in that before where we had to buy 15 vehicles all at the same time, and we don't want to get back into that situation. So Captain Herbst, my chief deputy, was in that meeting as well and didn't let that recommendation go, and forwarded an email to me that I then forwarded to you that caused me to kind of creatively look at vehicles that we do not purchase through that CIP program. And Tom is right, there is a considerable opportunity for tax relief if we approach vehicles outside of that cyclical purchase program, as Captain Herbst indicated in his supporting email. Roughly six vehicles, upwards of 300,000. And I'll give you a very simple example. Today, we are starting a project for a mothering room, a lactation room, where we're redesigning some space over at the jail for our employees, and we're using room and board funds for. And when you take funds that otherwise we're purchasing a SWAT vehicle out of, and we can use it for projects, when we take jail vehicles out of commissary and can turn around and use that for the plumbing replacement project in the jail and benefit the maintenance budget, we are providing real tax relief. So Tom and his assertion that there is a way to trim tax fat that way was absolutely right. And so I direct you back to Captain Herbst's email in support of our request for redirecting $300,000 towards those six vehicles. And he has highlighted which six vehicles we use outside of that CIP project or that rotational program, the amount of age or, and/or mileage on those vehicles. And I stand ready to answer questions, as does he, if you have questions regarding this request.
Tony, obviously, the ARP money was targeted at a couple of main areas, public safety and health.
Correct.
And as I thought here a few weeks ago when I brought this up, and I think today, I think this is probably a good project for ARP monies. The dollar amount is fairly low, really, if you look at it, $300,000. I think it's up to $300,000. So I think this is probably a good expenditures, as long as we're assured that the savings from here are used for other projects within the jail that normally would take tax dollars.
Right.
And I think that would be important there. But I think it's a smart expenditure. And again, it was targeted for public safety. And until, we'll let everybody have full discussion on this, but I would make a motion to approve the resolution as opposed to the $1,000 for the six cars.
I guess I, this probably, maybe I should have commented before. I saw this was put on the agenda for possible board action, and my feelings, and I know expressed them to Mark last night and haven't to you yet, this very well could be a project that qualifies. I'm not disputing that at all. I'm just not prepared to vote for some of these ARP proposals that we're having, I guess, going forward until we have a little better feel, I guess, or a little more strategic look at some of where our dollars are going, what pockets they are needing coming from. You know, I know public safety was definitely one. James and I have talked a little bit last week about the lost revenue category and some of the things that could come into that play into that area as well. And so I guess I'd like to be a little more strategic, I guess, and look and see what those proposals are. I know we've talked about millions of dollars that can go for roads and bridges projects, millions of dollars that probably could go for trails, as well as many of the other things we've got going too. But I just thought even recently, the space assessment that's coming back to us, there's millions of dollars in those changes or needs that we might have. So I was just going to decline or not vote today if we did have this on the agenda for board approval, just for that reason, not that it doesn't qualify.
Yeah, I think, obviously, your two primary focuses for this ARP fund is public health and law enforcement. You couldn't buy a vehicle for the county auditor out of this money, but for law enforcement, I know that it qualifies. So that, that's the other reason why Tom's recommendation, it kind of caught us off guard during budget, but I'm glad Mark didn't let it go and pursued it further, so.
I tend to agree with Linda.
As do I. Mr. Schwartz.
Yeah, I think that this could be a good use of funds, but I do want to see how this kind of next round of proposals really stacks up so we can make a decision on all of it at the same time.
Any other questions for me?
Might be later. I was gonna say, I look at this much like budget, as we start to kind of hone in, maybe on some of the projects, there might be then, if that's all right with you, to come back at that time.
Again, the only reason I brought this back was it was part of an earlier request, so it's, it's not like, quote, a new request. This is something that we did discuss at budget time when we were talking about ARP funding, and it just got a different twist to it. Mark, can I explain to Tony the different variables that we were trying to discuss that day? So that's the reason why I brought that back. It's not a new proposal. It's a proposal that the board had heard earlier, and it's just revising it. So that's the reason why it was on the agenda today.
No, I appreciate your comments, Tom.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to the discussion of the use of ARP funds for employee retention pay.
I think, yeah, I think that's Amanda, at least first, maybe.
Alrighty. Amanda Thesemeyer, Human Resources Director. Okay, so where we want to start with this? So last, I believe it was last week or a previous meeting where it was discussed and brought to the board's attention that the state, the governor, with their state ARPA funds is providing a $1,000 retention bonus for certified law enforcement. At the time, we thought it was also for our detention officers, but going through that application process, it was evident that was only for the state correction officers. So here to talk about retention bonuses under the ARPA funds, I did send out some information to you all. I highlighted two areas of funding sources under ARPA, so where bonuses or premium pay can be allowed. And there are some, you know, requirements within that that we need to probably discuss if the board wants to move forward. James has done some preliminary budget numbers, and I've also collected some information from other counties as well to provide that today, so.
What are the two categories?
Sure. So we have the retention bonus, which that is really funds that can be used to provide worker retention incentives, which are designed to persuade employees to remain with the employer as compared to other employment options. So that is just a straight retention bonus. It does say that these have to be narrowly tailored. So, for example, we know in certain areas in our county operations where we have retention issues and areas that we don't. So that's one thing to take in consideration when we do an assessment, which is required by the ARPA rule, as to how we determine, is this something that is widespread? Or is it, you know, I mean, there are some areas where we don't really have quite the retention issues as other job classifications. So that's one, is a retention bonus, and that's what the governor moved forward with, just with law enforcement.
I know I saw in that, you're at that point where it said in here, for example, a recipient may determine a retention bonus is necessary based on the presence of an alternative employment offer.
And it's pretty broad. I mean, there's employment offers everywhere. You know, we've learned that Target, I believe, just announced they're going to minimum wage of $24 a month for stores, you know, so I.
Yes.
I think we just have to show that we've done some kind of an assessment in order to substantiate that a retention bonus is warranted.
I think that was their top pay.
Was that, okay.
Yeah. That was their top, top of the scale.
So, but yes, there's, I mean, there's a lot of opportunities for people to move into other types of employment away from the county. Retention is a major concern for us. We have a lot of longevity here, which is wonderful, but people are getting ready to retire, and then compound that with the great resignation of people just, you know, moving on to other roles. We don't quite have some of the, maybe some of the perks that, you know, teleworking options, PTO, things that might draw out tuition reimbursement, and there's things that kind of hinder us when it comes to recruitment and retention. But again, I would say we're just starting to see some things escalate beyond law enforcement as well into, we've always had a hard time retaining our nurses, I can't compete with the hospitals. That would be an example, though, hospital offering an $8,000 sign-on bonus. This retention, you know, bonus, if we design something like that, would be appropriate to show that, but I don't know that we're gonna go up to $8,000. So, so that's retention. You know, it does require an assessment. It does require us looking at this, not, you know, it says to kind of narrowly tailor those, so.
So it wouldn't be across-the-board type of thing?
I think we'd want to make sure that we've assessed it to where it makes sense that it's across the board. I'm not sure.
Well, it didn't look like those were the state categories, though. So it does, do these not have to meet with the state qualifications or what they categorize?
Well, since they kind of tailored it to law enforcement.
Yes.
I think that's how they're tailoring, tailoring theirs to, it's just specific to law enforcement as opposed to, you know, more widespread, so.
Wasn't that maybe why the sheriff came and brought it to us, I think, initially, though, because it wasn't really fair across departments or his law enforcement staff?
Right. So, you know, you had people working side by side over in the jail, exposed to the same situations, exposed with, you know, COVID. So it wasn't, for him, it really showed that, okay, well, we were under the impression that this would capture most of his staff, but it did leave out certain individuals, certain classifications. And it let out master, you know, you think about master control, booking clerks. I know he mentioned public health, but in his division specific, it was just those that are sworn officers, so.
So for the funding that the state's providing for sworn law enforcement officers, is that prorated at all? If an officer started six months ago, is it?
I don't believe so, and I don't know if Tony has any, I don't believe it is. So it's just a one, and I believe it's a $1,000 check that you get in the mail, comes right from the state. You have to kind of hold back your tax money.
Dan, they could have, they could have been hired and certified up to, I think, the first of February of this year.
February 17th.
February 17th.
February 17th.
February 17th is the cutoff date for, gotcha, okay. That was gonna be my next question.
But there's no, you know, prorated. Now, I did see, one of the counties said that they did give $1,000 to their correction officers ahead of this announcement. officers ahead of this announcement from the governor, and they said that those correction officers have to be, stay employed for at least six months or, you know, in order, otherwise they'd have to pay that retention bonus back.
So that was that they were adding those correction officers to the state? They were doing that on their own?
On their own, yep. And
So is that what you think we'd be doing?
Amanda, when you were talking about retention. Has Black Hawk County experienced a problem other than the sheriff's office, which we did address with the $2 an hour increase? An hour? Has the rest of the county experienced a retention problem of people leaving other than retirements?
I would say we're starting to see it in public health again, especially with nursing staff.
Nursing is, is, is all over. The hospitals can't get nurses or bring them in. The thing right now is traveling nurses. And when I was in the hospital, I never had a nurse from Black Hawk County. They were all from Florida and Colorado, so.
Right, and so.
The nursing thing is a problem all over. That's, it's just not Black Hawk County.
And I guess for us, you know, it is, it's challenged to attract nurses. I mean, we tried to, we did some things the last negotiations to allow for that scale to be more flexible, but, you know, we try to get the people that want to have the benefits, they have a family, they want to, you know, have that kind of clinic setting where it's a Monday through Friday. But it is hard when there's just such, there's a lot of opportunities to travel and, you know, you can make a lot of money doing that. You can get sign-on bonuses, new grads or existing, you know, nursing staff to go to about anywhere. So, you know, I would say we're starting to see some people that have opportunities at the state that are exploring those opportunities. And, you know, and I suppose that's a bit of a retention concern, but I can't say that all the departments are experiencing what our law enforcement division and, and public health, nursing, and other than maybe dispatch has a bit of a, you know, retention as well. Because again, it's 24/7. It's mandatory over time. It's a difficult role at times to be in, so.
So besides the health department and the rest of the county, we do not have a retention problem going on at this time?
I wouldn't say that we don't. I mean, we're losing people to counties like we lost a ranger to Story County. I mean, it's, it's not as prevalent. You know, our law enforcement division is our largest division. But I do, I mean, I, I don't know that I would say we have a retention problem in all the other departments, but it's always out there that people are looking for other opportunities. And, you know, we do want to retain people. And so that's kind of where we're at right now. I mean, I would say that it's a
It's interesting that this is called a retention bonus, because I'm not certain $1,000 retains anyone.
No, and I, I think that's a fair statement. You know, you can certainly, that's why I think I've kind of highlighted more the premium pay as well, because retention, no, I don't know that anybody's gonna stick around for $1,000. Now, you can build in something that says if you stayed for at least six months and what's, what's $1,000, you know, in, in time worked, you can kind of evaluate that and say, okay, if you, you know, quit either on your own terms or, or discharged, discharged, then that could be recouped, so.
And the second category or criteria is for the premium pay.
Correct, yes. So, premium pay, when this interim rule first came out, it was more geared towards essential services, public health, emergency services. So after all the comments were received and the final rule came out, they really just said that, you know, anybody working for a government maintaining critical infrastructure would be eligible for premium pay. So it really opened it up to all public employees that would be eligible. But they have to meet these other factors. They have to do essential work. And then the third factor is it has to respond to. So this is where, you know, essential work, I would say, is pretty broad as well, especially since we provide public services. Hard to argue that any of our services are not essential in one way or another. Then the respond to, it says that it required the premium pay programs respond to eligible workers performing essential work during the pandemic. Premium pay responds to eligible workers performing essential work if it prioritizes low and moderate income persons. So that's where we have this threshold, that if you make one and a half times the annual average salary or average annual salary of all Iowa physicians, then we would have to make some kind of justification as to why that premium pay is responsive to those workers who are higher income earners. So now, I believe we've talked, there's been, when this first came out, when, last fall, and we had a brief discussion on it, we talked about how you could, if you didn't want to award or fund with premium pay and for those that were high income workers, but still recognize that there were high income workers exposed to COVID and providing essential work, that that could be done through, I believe, the reserves. That was an option as well, as opposed to using ARPA funds. Because the premium pay really highlights the disparity amongst the, the income threshold and focusing on the low to moderate income roles that, if that makes sense. But that very much, I mean, you know, opens it up, when it says essential work, it says that, it defines that as work that is not performed while teleworking from a residence and involves either regular in-person interactions with patients, the public, or coworkers of that, of the individual that is performing the work, or regular physical handling of items that were handled by, or handled by patients, the public, or coworkers. So it, it opens it up pretty broadly there.
How difficult would it be for HR to identify the number of employees that this would impact based on this criteria?
Well, I don't think it, I mean, we need a little bit of time, but, I mean, based, under premium pay, I don't see how, we had nobody teleworking. I mean, we had people interacting, I don't, I mean, I guess I'd be kind of looking, is there really anything here that isn't essential? To me, it, it opens it up very broadly. So we've done some preliminary numbers to kind of get an idea of what that breakdown, you know, looks like, and taking out those that are receiving the $1,000 bonus from the state. If that's something that, now, if you want to do retention pay, I think that would, that one, it's a little bit less clear to me as to what kind of assessment needs to be done. But again, I'd be looking at turnover, I'd be looking at, you know, why people have left, and, and I know those things just from the nature of our work in our office. And I can clearly point to which ones we have greater retention issues than those that we don't.
I'd be more inclined to follow the criteria of the premium pay to establish numbers, number of employees, that is. And then the board, and if, you know, I'd say the majority agrees, then we establish an amount and a window. I think February 17th is a good number. It's continuity with the state, anyway.
I think there still seem to be a lot of unknowns and a lot of uncertainty, I guess, just as this came up, this retention bonus came up late and early on. If we would have considered the premium pay numbers, this would have changed things, I guess, for us already. So again, this is something like, I think we still keep on our radar. I still want to see us moving on it and either decide, having more information, deciding yes or no. Several of the employees that, I, I do think all county employees were essential. I think we all worked hard and did our best to keep all county services flowing, whether it was in the recorder's office or treasurer's office or supervisor's office. Health did as well, and definitely public safety. But we kept government, I guess, working, and so I do see the essential being that. But when I keep reading, when it says that adopted the definition of essential work to ensure that premium pay is targeted to workers that faced or face heightened risks due to the character of their work during a pandemic. To me, it was those who had the greatest health risks, because they had that communication or had that work relationship or interaction with more COVID and more directly.
Yeah.
So that, to me, I still have a difficult time working through that, but like I said, if we're looking at something for
And that's with, you know, how far, I mean, we can kind of tailor this however the board wishes, if they wish to move forward on this. I don't think you're gonna have people, you know, someone working at the front counter of the treasurer's office who has the, that office probably has the most foot traffic of our offices. I mean, you had, we had a couple elections during then, you know, so I don't think someone like myself, an HR director, who doesn't have that much interaction, if that's the way you want to go through and assess that, we certainly can. You know, there's gonna probably be some painful parameters within that. And, but we certainly, you know, under the definition, we definitely want to capture those that did have the greatest risks, those that were of that lower to moderate income.
I personally think every Black Hawk County was on the front line during the COVID. Anywhere from the treasurer's office to the recorder's to the elections office, the auditors, you had maintenance dealing in different buildings and so forth. So my opinion, every Black Hawk County face was on the front lines, and they were all essential, in my opinion.
Yeah, there were some people that weren't working during that time, I guess.
They're
So, but I just thought, yeah, it's, it's several factors I know you need to consider or have been considering.
And I think too, you know, back when we did, we, we, a lot of people said if you're essential, we had three departments that absolutely worked through every minute of this pandemic without a doubt. We had then even closing the courthouse and then coming back the pandemic, that exposure was still there. It's not like it went away after, you know, it's, we're still dealing with it today. But yeah, that's, that's one way to kind of start that, it would probably.
I think most, we see most counties haven't done this, whether they're waiting to do it at the end, or they're just having such difficulty identifying and working through it, I think. And I've heard even some of our staff say, you know, that we all just did our jobs. They don't look at it as something that they necessarily think that should be rewarded. Not that we don't feel that way, but
Sure.
They've just said that's things that they could do and, and so, but I just wondered if many counties are struggling with this, same.
I think the key word, Linda, is what you said. I think they're all struggling on how to do it. They just hasn't figured out what's a justifiable way of, of doing a program like this. And I think that's why you see the majority of the counties that haven't done anything yet.
Right, there's, you know, one county that kind of did a widespread. It was a smaller, near Lynn County area, but, and they even tailored that to if you worked in 2020. And I don't know, you know, again, the pandemic went beyond 2020. So, but there's, there's options to look at this, but it is, it's difficult. It's not like it, you know, just something that we can just easily dive into and make a, a quick decision. There's a lot of considerations to take into account.
Have we given you enough information, I guess, to continue or at least to look at it and come up with some scenarios? I don't know.
James has some budget numbers?
Well, what's difficult, excuse me, what's difficult is we, we have such a wide scope, right? So the difficult about this, or difficult part about this is, you know, how much if we were to, if we were to match what the state was willing to give, $1,000, we would have roughly 310 employees that were not, were not included with that. So that's, that's Black Hawk County wide. So if you were to do $1,000 for those 310 employees, you're looking at $310,000. Whether that meets, whether that meets premium pay, whether that meets retention pay, or if it doesn't meet anything and we're pulling out of reserves, that's what we're looking at. So I, I, I think that, you know, in the worst case, that's $310,000. Now, when we're, when we're looking at scope, that might, that might narrow down a little bit, but it's really gonna be, it's gonna be really how much we're wanting to, wanting to give. And if, if you wanted to narrow that scope to all employees or the ones that are on the front lines, whether we're public health, public safety, that's, that's kind of what we're looking at. So, but on a, on a broad scale, countywide, you're looking at 310 employees that need to be either fit within premium pay, retention pay, or just county dollars.
Amanda, when you, obviously COVID throughout the state was territorial. What I mean by that, what's different, had different stats and so forth. Has anybody, have you heard of the, of the other government entities in Black Hawk County like the Waterloo? Is Cedar Falls doing anything with their employees? Seems that they're in the same condition, basically service to the public and so forth?
I could find out. I haven't heard, I haven't read, the only thing I've read in Cedar Falls are the school districts on the news is
Same in Waterloo.
Waterloo, okay. So I don't know that I, I haven't seen or heard anything at another like government entity in this area, but it seems to have started with the school districts.
Tom, Dan, go ahead.
Did the schools get a different pot of money for what they're doing?
It's basically, yeah, you're right. It's not ARP, it's kind of their form of ARP.
Yeah.
Yes, so, but that's what I've seen so far. There's been some, at least locally.
And I think I've mentioned to Amanda, so I don't know if I've mentioned it to the board, is that at the UCC meetings where the five urban counties meet, I did approach this subject and ask them if any of them had, were tackling this. And the only one that contacted me was Dubuque. And Dubuque County said that they weren't doing it across the board or anything for their staff. The only ones that they were doing it for were the employees of Sunny Crest Manor, which that was, if you all remember, that was much like our country view, so it was people in that direct line that were actually working in the hospital. And those, they did consider some additional pay for those individuals, but they weren't doing it for any others. And I know that some of the local counties, our surrounding counties at Intercog, I've also asked, number one, I guess, if they'd been approached by communities with projects, and also what they were doing, and neither, none of them responded that they'd done this either, so.
Yeah, most of the, I didn't get too many responses. A few that said they, again, I would say smaller entities, smaller counties have decided that whether they're just not doing anything at this time, a lot of responses I really didn't get back. And like Tom said, and Dan and every, you know, it's
I think it's something we can keep on the radar for now, but, you know.
Yeah, I want a week or two more to contemplate it.
Yeah.
So, and then I, you know, you kind of heard the dollar figures from James, so you know, kind of the magnitude, I guess, of what that is. And that is taking out any one that has already received that or plans to receive that through the state-funded retention bonus.
And I don't think we were gonna know that for a while, right? I mean, it mentioned in there about
So March 11th was the deadline?
I know, but it says following review. I don't know when that is, but it said following review and verification that they're eligible. Then the $1,000 is mailed directly to the recipient.
Yep, so it may be
That'll be a black deal.
Let's see, yeah.
So we're kind of removed from that, it seems like, but.
Well, I really appreciate this discussion. I think it's kind of been an area that, of the ARPA funding that has been out there, but we haven't really had too much discussion on. I think it's, you know, helpful to staff and, and for us to just kind of air some of this out. And we can, I can start looking at frontline staff, just based on, you know, the nature of the work. That's gonna be most, all of our union staff. So we can kind of start there and
Have the unions weighed in at all on the retention? That collecting burden, and I just wondered on that retention bonus and because it isn't for everyone?
Um, I haven't heard too much from, no, at least from Unit 5.
I don't think it's gonna have any impact.
Yeah.
Fifty cents an hour breaks it down.
But, no, I mean, I don't, I don't believe they've had any.
Yeah.
I just wondered if for
I don't think, I don't think either one's gonna make or break anything, but there's a, I gotta look at this from the outside world, what, what's going on with the world right now. There's a lot of other things that gotta be brought into scope with this to think about, you know, the people out there that are, aren't as lucky as we are to have a job right now. I know there's jobs available, but there's some, some good jobs and some bad jobs. So I'd rather take some time in retention. I don't see that as a problem. There's, there's people changing, there's people changing jobs every three months, you know, and the younger set of people in the world, but on the most part, we have a good workforce here, and I think they're, they're happy here.
Well, and I think, you know, it, it seems like the premium pay seems to be more suited to our operations here, since we do have a lot of to our operations here, since we do have a lot of dedicated committed staff and that have stayed with us throughout this entire, you know, whether it's two years of the pandemic or 20 years since they've been here. So, but, no, that's, that's all I really have for right now. I think this is, you know, I heard you mention about getting an idea of where the ARPA funding is going. So, we'll just monitor this, and I can provide information and as the board wishes, so.
Probably another works, or whatever, another board agenda item or something after you maybe get the information presented.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you, Amanda.
Lot to think about.
Next on the agenda, I, the appropriate decorum amongst elected officials when addressing each other and staff via both verbal and written communication.
We, many times I've referred to the employee handbook since I've been on the board. And I've actually joked with the staff that these rules apply to everybody but the elected officials. And that just seemed wrong to me. The majority of this Board of Supervisors has a tremendous amount of power. We just need to wield that power wisely. As a matter of fact, the work rules in the employee handbook state that the Board of Supervisors may adopt additional rules as it sees fit. And sometimes we need, I even, I have to do this with myself. I, sometimes I just need to restate the obvious, hold myself accountable. And in our work rules, it states it is the policy of Black Hawk County to encourage the standards of proper conduct that's in its employees to assure the orderly and efficient operation of county government. It also states it is the policy of Black Hawk County that all employees are entitled to a work environment in which all individuals are treated with courtesy and respect. All I'm asking is, I, I propose that we simply make some simple adjustments and changes to our work rules to include elected officials. I think we need to hold ourselves accountable. Sometimes we need subtle reminders to engage in appropriate behavior. I, myself, in this boardroom, have sometimes gotten a little rammie. And this room is, should be sacred in our decorum, and we should have civil discourse, not engage in disrespect as such and unprofessionalism. So, let's, if anybody else has any input, all I'm asking is that, you know, what I propose is I work with Mike and insert some simple changes in the work rules to provide subtle reminders for elected officials and show to them that we are adhering to the same standards as our employees. I, I just don't want to be in a situation where rules for leave, but not for me. I talked with many members of the staff about these changes, and I was, I couldn't believe the support for them. And I encourage any of our elected officials to reach out to staff members to see how this feel about it. Matter of fact, I strongly encourage you to do so, because I spoke with several, and all felt that this was a good path, to go down a proper path. And I hope I have the support of the board to proceed.
Now, you're talking about the handbook in particular, not policies, or I don't know if we even have any policies that are directed to this, but.
The handbook, yes, that finds the work rules and such.
Okay.
When's the last time I was looked at?
Looks like the last revised version was 2020.
But I don't think this has ever been considered, probably, that I know of. I guess my question would be, for further discussion, and it doesn't have to be done now too, is the enforcement of that? Because I said it does, with us as elected officials, I think it probably makes it difficult for our employees to take any action if it was something directed to them, if one, if any of us commit against them. But I certainly agree with you on this and support it, because I think while we are elected officials, we do work for the county, I've always thought, and we are, we receive a salary and benefits from our county, and that there should be a standard no less for us than what we expect from our employees. And quite honestly, if all of us probably should be above that, even a standard and held to a higher standard. But I definitely think, like I said, this, this can happen.
Question to your answer, Lynda, who we work for as elected officials is the voters of Black Hawk County.
That's very true.
Taxpayers and the voters, and that hasn't changed from day one. Employees in all businesses have a chain of command. And it just so happens, the chain of command stops at the Board of Supervisors, and it's our job. Even though we have five supervisors, neither one has any certain control over the other supervisors. Again, we answer to the voters and the taxpayers of Black Hawk County. So, nothing's changed over the years. I haven't really seen any problems with, I think quietly some other elected officials are going to kind of look at this and say, are you kidding me? I think if you don't handle yourself well as an elected official, you're not going to stay in office, very simply, because the people see it, they read it, and you got your employees, but your voters also. So, I don't really see a need for any changes. The handbook is for employees, for new employees, when they come in, they get a handbook, they see how the rules and regulations are, just like in any other business. And there's a chain of command, and unfortunately or unfortunately, it ends at the Board of Supervisors, and it stops there, because the Board of Supervisors are the top of Black Hawk County. And I think it's up to the individual elected official, how he handles himself, whether it be the sheriff, the auditor, the treasurer, and the recorder, or even the Board of Supervisors. So, personally, I don't support any changes. I support any changes to the handbook, because that's ever been a, a book that we've kind of improved over the years. Frankly, I'm surprised to hear that we did upgrade it in 2020. I thought it was even older than that, because when I got here, we didn't actually have a handbook, per se. So, I'm glad that we're continuing to upgrade that. And I think it's up to the individual elected official to handle him or herself respectfully. And if they don't, then they answer to the people of Black Hawk County.
So, you don't believe that we are employees and should be held to a standard as, as the same?
You could call us employees, you could call us elected officials. Either way, the people, the employees of Black Hawk County, Lynda, they get hired and fired by Black Hawk County. We get hired and fired by the citizens of Black Hawk County. Always been that way, always will be that way.
Oh, true. But the voters, unless we do something criminally, I agree, that we are held to that standard.
You don't have to be criminally either. I've seen.
You can be removed from office criminally, or criminally, but.
I've seen some supervisors in the past that was in the newspaper every other day and come election time, they weren't reelected. So, you pay the price one way or the other.
So, you don't believe we have a responsibility, I guess, to uphold ourselves?
Sure we do.
All right.
I didn't say that. Sure we do. But the employee handbook is for the employees, not for the supervisors.
It's just like the military, there's a chain of command.
Well, I want to provide an avenue for employees to have relief, because in the past, we've had situations where employees have been given, employees that report directly to the supervisors have gotten counter orders. And I want to have a avenue for them to grieve the process, or have a process to grieve these situations where they can get clarification from the majority of the board.
And that's what I guess I was, when I'm talking about enforcement, that's really what I was looking at. It's nothing to have it on paper, but how do we make sure it works?
Right. I mean, we, as a matter of fact, it probably provides protection for the county. There's a mess in Polk County right now, where an employee or past employee is suing the Board of Supervisors. I think all of the members, except for one, have been named in a lawsuit, and it appears as if it's proceeding. And I don't know if they have a process in place such as this, but if we have a process in place, we have to follow that process in order to provide us with protection. If three of the Board of Supervisors or four of the Board of Supervisors determine that another, and we have, these, these are situations, the employees have protection, where situations such as this can be discussed in closed session. That's protection provided under the code. Let's say a situation does arise with a supervisor, I would say, and Mike would be the expert on it, we could discuss this in closed session. And ultimately, if three or four determine that the conduct isn't appropriate, we could counsel that board member, actually trying to assist them and guide them in modifying their behavior. And if, if a lawsuit, if a lawsuit were to be filed, if we followed our procedure and took action, I assume we'd have less liability.
Dan, how would you, currently, an employee has a disciplined path that they go through, warnings and so forth. How would you discipline a county supervisor?
We can speak with that county supervisor in closed session, and if the behavior is not modified, we have a resolution that we discuss in public.
You're going to move them from, remove them from office then?
We can't. But we can, we can't, we can't move a fellow supervisor from office, but we certainly can admonish them in public if it warrants it. And I'm not saying we need to take up petty grievances. I'm saying we need an appropriate process to address behaviors that are inefficient and improve the effectiveness of our operation if they should so arise.
What if you get a, you got five supervisors, what if you get a majority up there at one party, and they do that against the other two that are in the same party?
In answer to the voters in the fall election?
They have now, and they always have in the past, so nothing's changed. I just think you're opening up a can of worms that you shouldn't be going there. I have respect for all our employees and for all our department heads, but like I said, there is a chain of command and it's out threaded, the Board of Supervisors. And it sounds like you're talking about the Board of Supervisors. You're not, you say elected officials. Are you talking about the sheriff, the auditor, the treasurer, and the recorder?
The Board of Supervisors can make the rules, and they can, if they just want to limit these rules to the Board of, or limit it to adding the Board of Supervisors, they certainly can do so.
But you're not talking about the other elected officials? Today, you're just talking about the Board of Supervisors?
I would prefer to add all elected officials, but I believe this is a decision for the majority of the board.
I'll just suppose, waste my support for moving forward with something like this. If, of course, if nothing else, just adds another layer of accountability and a reminder for how we should conduct ourselves.
I guess next steps? What are you thinking?
I will work on a draft and work with Mike, and I will bring it back to the board.
I think it should include all, if you're going to do it, all elected officials, because there's harassment from other supervisor, or other personnel too.
Well, if it can improve, I guess.
Well, and, and it goes a long way. There's a lot of things going on here that people aren't aware of that need to come out in the open sometime. And I think that, that's what you're trying to get at, Dan.
I want to improve us.
Yeah, just make.
I think, I think we got a good board overall. But we all got a job to do, and we all got different personalities. I'm old school. I, I think people should be here and be doing their job. And if they got a problem with somebody, they should go talk to them about it, like a man or a woman, not be going behind closed doors with stuff. That's all I'll say.
And respectfully. Like I said, we need to be respectful of others.
Yeah, that would be nice too.
Staff, colleagues.
Yeah. And not be, not be keeping secrets, like running around like little two-year-olds and stuff, and keeping secrets from people. When you get, when you get, it was brought out a long time ago. If a board member goes and talks to a department head, whatever they talk about, if it, if it involves the board, it should be brought back to the board. It shouldn't be just one person talking.
Well, we all are able to have conversations whenever we want with department heads or staff or anyone.
Yeah, but, yeah, but a lot of different stuff.
I have always told the department heads over the years, any discussion that I've had with them, whether it be by email memo or in person, their response should include the entire board. And to be honest with you, I don't know if that's going on now. I know I, I've brought up some things in the past here, who made this decision, and I, this is the first I heard about it, somebody said, well, I did. So, I don't know if decisions are being made in the office with a department head, with one or two supervisors, but I would be careful ordering on open meetings law of any kind of business like that that's not down at the table, but rather in an office, starting some process that takes board approval or board discussion.
I just wanted to make one note on our employee handbook and just highlight that, you know, we do have a process. It is specific to employees, but the policy of the handbook, or I guess the section of the handbook is our discrimination, harassment, retaliation policy. It says that it's the policy of Black Hawk County that all employees are entitled to a work environment in which all individuals are treated with courtesy and respect, free of discrimination and harassment. So, you know, this scope, it says it applies to Black Hawk County employees, non-employees who have business contact with county employees, and all individuals conducting business on behalf of or representing Black Hawk County. I think, you know, if that's the direction you're working with Mike, kind of paralleling those. You know, we do have a process for people to maybe not quite grieve inappropriate or unprofessional, but it, that's where some of this starts to possibly then dip into potentially harassment, depending on, and if that's what you're looking for. You know, we do have an area of our handbook that addresses that for employees. But again, if there's anything that, you know, we can help with this, what you get with Mike on, I just want to make sure it follows some line in alignment with what we do have in our handbook, so.
I think Mike and HR are going to be hand in hand with this as well, when you meet, yeah, it was like, not just to, yeah, exclude. So, thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none. Any reports or information from the board?
Well, I just have this question I was going to ask. Last week, we talked about the communities coming forward and agreeing on a date or inviting them to attend a meeting so we could hear their, all of their projects. And I think it was suggested, or someone recommended the 15th as a possible date, because it was a little bit off in the future. And the two that were in last week, the Elkhorn Raymond people that were going around visiting with us, mentioned that that was a week of spring break, and if we could push it off till the following week. And so, I wanted to bring that back to the board and say we could certainly notify the others of the date to be, when we proposed this, but if the 22nd would make sense to do it on the 22nd.
Yes.
That work for you, Craig?
I'm not sure.
Well, do we, you want, we'll just leave it open-ended and push it off later?
Who decided the 15th wasn't good? Them two, them two are representatives?
No, they, they didn't say anything about deciding it wasn't good. They said, could we push it off?
Because there's other counties or other areas that want to come in and talk. I told them, just come in and do it at, uh, public comments.
Well, we kind of discussed that earlier, though, that we didn't like.
I've had several people in the last few days that say it's wrong we're even talking to them. And I explained to them why we're talking to them, because it's their money too.
Well, I'm certainly fine with waiting till whenever. I just meant they, they ask if it could be after the 15th and not that week of spring break, so.
I'm not sure on the 22nd or the 29th what's good. You know, they're all good, really. I have no plans of being in place else.
I'll wait till after the 22nd. We'll come, bring it back again and see.
Sounds good. Anything else? Moving on to the canvas, this resolution to certify the outcome of the votes cast from the part of Black Hawk County line in the Joseph Community School District for the Joseph Community School District Board Election held Tuesday, March 1st, 2022, in accordance with the IL Code 50.24.
It's gonna, I knew it real long time, I was sure, but. It's gonna, I knew it real long time, I was sure, but. Okay. Here's the election results and here's the tape and that's the only one page. Get ready.
This should be pretty easy.
Easy, it's like, I think it's one number, I'm just making sure. Just a minute, I'm just seeing the. Oh, okay, here, I was going to say, I'm just double checking that the numbers are on here. So, looks like registered voters, she's got six forty-seven. And then the ballot cast one twenty-one. The yeses are, and those are twenty-five.
Yes, six.
We're down. They're letting him sign first because he's chair. Oh, you want two later? Oh, here, I'll get mine done. Thank you, ma'am.
There were no provisional ballots rejected and not counted in the Blackhawk County portion of this election.
Thank you, Grant. With that, I'll enter a favor for attorney.
Second. We need to. Resolution to certify.
Oh, yeah, resolution, sorry about that, yeah. Resolution to certify the outcome.
So moved.
I didn't want to handle this, Dan.
Local call vote. We got, we got a meeting going on up here still.
Is, is Tom off?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh. Um, Schwartz?
Yes.
Choka?
Yes.
Valen?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Okay, I got all of them, four of them.
I thought, yeah, I didn't count.
Yeah.